Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 10, 2014 Business Meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. And our first order of business tonight will be to have a moment of silence for Avis Gabbert. And if you will, please join me in a moment of silence. Our opening ceremony tonight is the presentation of colors will be by the Mount Pleasant High School Junior ROTC Commander, First Lieutenant Jonathan Barby, Lieutenant Colonel Gary Cooper, First Lieutenant Lexie Vanderburg, and First Lieutenant Matt Cavaness.
Order, up. Left, eight.
[singing] Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets went blare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order, up.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to give a round of applause to our singers from Concord Okay, and Ms. Anna Ritchie, thank you very much for having your team here. We greatly appreciate it, and they were outstanding. Okay, board members, we'll proceed with 4.1, once everybody has a chance to get their Okay, board members, we'll go on to 4.1, and I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
David Harrison has made a motion.
Second.
And a second by Barry Schumaker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda has been adopted, and we will move on to item number 5, 0.1, Impact Through Education, and we will ask Ronnie Boone to come to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Tonight, Impact Through Education Awards will be recognizing students and staff members at Cox Mill Elementary School and Mount Pleasant Middle School. Before we begin, I would like to extend our thanks to our friends at Concord Printing for being the sponsor of these awards. We really do appreciate their support. And now, we will begin our celebration. I'd like to begin by asking any members of the Cox Mill Elementary School administrative team to please come forward to stand with their students and staff at this time. Doesn't look like any of them are here, so we will just begin with our... You'll go stand with them? Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School is Tyler Castro. Would Tyler and his family please come forward? Tyler is a 5th grade student at Cox Mill Elementary School. He's a very caring and supportive individual. He's always looking out for another person's feelings, and he knows what it means to be a true friend and go out of his way to make sure that all of his classmates feel special. Tyler is quick to lend a smile and a supportive comment to a friend in need. Tyler works hard in the classroom as well as around the school. He uses his talents to create the morning news program for the school. He's creative in front of and behind the camera. Tyler's teachers describe him as a quiet leader. He's a serious student, but at the same time, has an undeniable wit and sense of humor that will surprise you. Tyler makes an impact daily by being true to himself and making his family and teachers proud. He sets a wonderful example for the students of Cox Mill Elementary to follow. Tyler's presence at the school will be missed next year as he moves on to more success at middle school and beyond. Congratulations, Tyler. Our next Cox Mill Elementary School honoree is Robin Rosser. Would Robin and her family please come forward?[520.01][520.01][applause] Robin is also a 5th grade student at Cox Mill Elementary School. As a student, Robin strives to do her best in the classroom. She's very quiet and reserved, which serves as a great camouflage for her impeccable sense of humor.[541.51][541.51][laughter] She serves her peer... She serves as a peer helper in the classroom for students with special needs. The smile on Robin's face and the faces of the students in the classroom are heartwarming. She's always giving of herself. Robin's teachers say she is as honest as they come. During book discussion, if Robin doesn't agree with the teacher, she has the most graceful way of getting her point across, which makes everyone listen and think again. Robin Rosser is a wonderful example for her fellow students. Cox Mill Elementary School is happy to have known her during her time in elementary school, and they look forward to the wonderful things she will do in the years ahead. Congratulations, Robin. And I have to say that both Robin and Tyler interrupted their overnight field trip to Camp Thunderbird to come back here to get their awards tonight. So, we appreciate them taking the time out of that.[631.66][631.66][applause] We'll continue on with our awards for Cox Mill Elementary, and I'd like to call Ms. Kimberly Stout to the podium, or to the front of the room, I'm sorry, with her family as well.
She's not here yet. She was under investigation since 6:30, so she's in the meeting room.
Okay. Well, we'll...
We'll circle back.[654.16][654.16][laughter]
Is Ms. Goldinger here? Ms. Jerry Goldinger? Ms. Goldinger, would you and your family please come forward?[661.37][661.37][applause] Jerry Goldinger has served Cox Mill Elementary School as the school treasurer for the past year and a half. During her time at Cox Mill, Mrs. Goldinger has been a positive force for staff, students, and parents. She has a wonderful sense of humor and is quick with a joke or smile to help anyone through a tough moment. She's dedicated to the needs of her coworkers. As the school treasurer, she has worked to keep the books and the staff in order. She is meticulous in her duties and has received a perfect score on her past two audits. Mrs. Goldinger is highly respected by the staff and families at Cox Mill Elementary. She will be greatly missed as she transitions to her new role as school treasurer at Harrisburg Elementary. Cox Mill is proud to say they trained her well and appreciate the time and dedication she showed with them. Mrs. Goldinger has made a lasting impact on Cox Mill Elementary School. Thank you. We will move on to honoring our students and staff members from Mount Pleasant Middle School. And I'd like to invite any members of the Mount Pleasant Middle School administrative team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle is Frankie Hillman-Toller. Over and over again, when you talk with Frankie's friends and teachers, you hear them say, Frankie is one of the most accepting students I work with. Frankie is always willing to work with a wide variety of people and personalities. She helps create a collaborative and nonjudgmental atmosphere where it is okay to admit your weaknesses and to show your strengths. Frankie is involved in her school and her community. She sings in her church youth band, she's participated in Beta Club, and she is a leader on the Mount Pleasant Middle School cheerleading squad. Frankie is a humble young lady who, when asked why she thinks the staff at Mount Pleasant Middle voted her as the winner of this award, she replied, "Because I turn in my work on time and put in an effort."[858.43][858.43][laughter] Frankie is that special kind...[862.51][862.51][laughter] Frankie is that special kind of kid, the kind of kid the teachers teach for, the kid the teachers remember, the kid that makes teaching a rewarding profession. Frankie makes an impact every day on students and staff at Mount Pleasant Middle, and Our next honoree is Owen Pruitt. Would Owen and his family please come forward? We are naturally drawn to people who, when faced with adversity or difficulty, put a smile on their face and set their mind to get through it. And so, many staff and students are drawn to Owen Pruitt, a young man who is known at Mount Pleasant Middle for his determination, effort, and sense of humor. That seems to be a theme tonight.[968.63][968.63][laughter] Owen is a young man who is active in his school and his community. He played on the Mount Pleasant Middle School basketball team for two years, plays in the local recreational league, and has attended numerous clinics and camps. Owen is a drummer who has been studying his craft for more than three years. He has performed in the Mount Pleasant Middle School talent show every year he has attended the school there and has worked with the band at his church. When asked why he thinks the staff at Mount Pleasant Middle voted him as a winner of this award, Owen said that, "A lot of people say that I am funny and keep things happy, even in tough times." One of Owen's teachers says, "Owen is someone I can truly categorize as a star student." While there are numerous students who are good at following directions and learning what they need to learn, Owen is the kind of student who does that and so much more. The intelligence, intrigue, and passion for learning that he brings to the classroom are the kinds of energy that truly make a classroom better for every student in that room. I do not just feel lucky to have had the opportunity to work with him and help him learn, I honestly feel genuinely honored to have had him as a student. Owen makes an impact every day on the students and staff at Mount Pleasant Middle School, Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle is Ms. Michelle Turner. Would Ms. Turner and her family please come forward? Michelle Turner is an extraordinary art teacher who every day makes an impact on students and staff alike. Michelle is a lateral entry teacher. Her former career as a graphic designer allowed her to use her talents as a teacher... allows her to use her talents as a teacher to help kids see the possibility of turning talent and a love of art into a fulfilling and enjoyable career. The attraction of teaching middle school for Ms. Turner was that it was there... was that when she got her start. It was there that she saw teachers sharing the love of art, and Ms. Turner's students know that same love from her as a teacher. Ms. Turner's favorite moments are when she sees a student use an art technique or concept that they... after they originally said, "I can't." Her students agree, saying that, "Ms. Turner pushes me out of my comfort zone to create art that I didn't know I could do." At the same time, it is very clear when you enter her classroom that her students are not only allowed, but guided to make their own art. Students do not all work on the same exact product, but use the techniques that Ms. Turner teaches them in creative ways to develop personal works of art. Ms. Turner's advanced art students say that her passion for art inspires them. For many, it is their favorite class of the day. Mrs. Turner also has had an impact on the staff of Mount Pleasant Middle School. One peer commented, "Her determination, devotion, and dedication have proven her to be a natural teacher at heart and at hand." Her quiet demeanor with all of her students, she serves her well, and her love and enthusiasm for teaching art exudes in all areas of her life as a teacher and a person. She brings out the best in her students, and she molds them to be better people by taking pride in their work and in themselves. Another teacher said, "Ms. Turner's compassionate approach to education exemplifies the impact she makes on Mount Pleasant's learners daily. She immediately earns student respect and emphasizes the importance of equality, generosity, and freedom of thought. These skills cannot be taught simply acquired through an... cannot be taught, they're simply acquired through an amazing role model." Mrs. Turner has earned awards, including an international travel grant for her art, but her students and the staff at Mount Pleasant Middle agree that her biggest impact is on the budding artist in the Mount Pleasant community. And our final honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Mr. David Long. Would Mr. Long and his family please come forward? David Long is an extraordinary gentleman who goes above and beyond his job responsibilities to make an impact on the students and staff at Mount Pleasant Middle School every day. Mr. Long is a former law enforcement officer, a pilot, and a part-time accountant who chooses to be the best custodian he can be. Mr. Long is one of those one-in-a-million employees that any school would feel lucky to hire. He contributes not only through his abundant wealth of expertise in many aspects of the school, but also in his maturity and wisdom, his leadership, and his positive demeanor. According to Mr. Long's coworkers, he has been a friend as much as he has been a coworker. He lives his life as all should do, with pride in what he does, says, and understands. He's always willing to help anyone at any given time. He listens when needed and gives his opinion when asked. He's very knowledgeable about his work and does all that is asked of him. He sets a great example of how a person should act and be around the students and the staff. Mr. Long has impeccable high standards for himself and others around him. He is a versatile employee with a variety of skills, who as a rule rather than an exception, goes beyond the job description. He's an extremely compassionate man who goes out of his way for others and takes a personal interest in the school, its students, and its success. Mr. Long is a pillar of the Mount Pleasant Middle School community who makes a positive impact on the staff and students every day. She's not here. She's here? Oh. Okay.
Okay. Say what? Whenever she gets here, let us know. I want to make sure she gets recognized.
Absolutely.
So, that is a-okay.
Absolutely.
We will move on and welcome Mr. Tim Vaughn to the podium with Dr. Shepherd. And while they're going to the podium, let me just mention that Mr. Vaughn has been coming dutifully to our meetings once a month for a long time, and we greatly appreciate it. We appreciate the support, and we appreciate Hilbush recognizing our teachers and doing a little something for us, and it... thank you very much for being here.
I'm delighted.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Glenda Jones.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. It is my pleasure to present our Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month. We extend our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hilbush Ford for their generosity. This wonderful program allows us to honor an outstanding teacher in our district each month. Mr. Vaughn, we appreciate your steadfast dedication to this program and to our school district. We thank you and Hilbush Ford for making this possible. All right. The March Cabarrus County Schools' Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month is Paige Norris. Mrs. Norris, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward? All right. Ms. Norris was nominated by a parent who wrote, "Ms. Norris provides an amazing classroom atmosphere for my child to learn. This teacher has gotten my child excited about school and the endless possibilities she can accomplish. She has given my child the self-esteem she needed to challenge herself to read harder books and to write stories. Even when she makes mistakes, she is proud that she tried." The parent continued with, "Mrs. Norris has a passion to teach and educate young children and give them the best start possible in school. I am glad that she is teaching my child, and I am glad to know her as a person. She has positively impacted my child's life for many years to come." Mrs. Norris, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, please accept our thanks for all that you do to help create a strong foundation for your students and to make their and their parents' first experience in school a positive one.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Paige. Next, we'll move on to 5.3, and we will welcome Dr. Kelly Probst to the podium. And these are... these are great presentations here while somebody's bringing us a check.[1718.82][1718.82][laughter]
I don't know if I've ever been in this position before, so this is fun. Good evening. At this time, I'd like Rachel Wilks, the new executive director for the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, to come forward. This is a lot of fun. For the last 15 years, administrators who play golf, one day would get together and play a round of golf and call it our golf tournament. It was a golf tournament, but we didn't raise any money. So, this past summer, we decided to take ourselves a little bit more serious and raise some money. Didn't improve our golf, but we raised some money. And we decided that we would raise funds for the education foundation, so it's my pleasure to give Rachel a check for $1,800.[1760.65][1760.65][applause] Now, the fun thing about having Rachel in this new position is that we have big dreams for a golf tournament. We're thinking masters level, right? And we'd like to raise more money next year in honor or to give to the foundation, so why don't you tell our audience a little bit about the foundation?
Sure. Thank you, Kelly, so much, and thanks for letting me be here tonight and speak to you all. It's been a very fun and exciting, almost 60 days on the journey. It's been a very fun and exciting, almost 60 days on the job, and we're very busy amplifying our presence in the community, fundraising, and developing the programs that we have. And I want to publicly thank you as school board members, Dr. Shepherd, the fantastic administration, and staff here for creating such a warm and welcoming environment for me. It's been a lot of fun getting to know each and every one of you, and that just means a great deal to us, particularly this donation tonight. I look forward to working with you all in the future in supporting public education in Cabarrus County, and I look forward to hopefully many more golf tournaments. And in the meantime, I'll practice my golf swing. Thanks.
Rachel, I want you to think about how great this country is. You just got a standing ovation for receiving a check. I mean, that's incredible. So, okay, we will move on, and before we do, I'd like to recognize a special guest, Chris Meesmer, a member of our local county commission, is here. Chris, welcome. We appreciate you being here and thank you for coming. We will move on, Board members, to item number six. Oh, fantastic. Kimberly Stout here? All right. Kimberly, would you come forward, please?
Just come stand on that line of tape right there, right there. Everybody, everybody. I'd like to introduce everyone to Kimberly Stout. Ms. Stout is the staff member, the other staff member from Cox Mill Elementary School that is an Impact Through Education Award recipient this evening, and I'd like to read a little more about Ms. Stout to everyone. Ms. Stout is a third-grade teacher at Cox Mill Elementary School. Along with her grade, third-grade colleagues, Ms. Stout strives to meet the needs of her students daily in the classroom. She's continually looking at data to mark the progress of her students toward that goal. She celebrates with her students as they grow. This past week, when she was seen doing a happy dance after reviewing the results of her students' performance on the Discovery Ed Benchmark Assessment. On top of what Ms. Stout accomplishes daily in the classroom, she's dedicated herself to science education for the students at Cox Mill Elementary. Ms. Stout facilitates an after-school science club for students in grades three, four, and five. This club has been met with overwhelming popularity at the school. Not willing to let any child be forgotten, Ms. Stout opens the club to all interested students. This means that Ms. Stout has more than 500 students in science club. That's right, 500. Each week, Ms. Stout and her fellow volunteers work with 150 to 200 students on engaging science projects. Her Cox Mill Elementary School family is extremely proud of the work she's doing to impact students beyond the classroom. Thank you for your devotion to the scientific process and to student learning. Congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award.
that's the fun part of the meeting when we get to recognize what outstanding people we have in our organization. Board members, we're going to move on to item number six, approval of the minutes, and we have a lot of them here. Board retreat, joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners, a work session, and a business meeting. So are there any comments regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a note for our board clerk to make the correction on page one of the January 30th joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, where it reads on paragraph, well, below the list of everyone that were there, and we talked about the resolutions, where it says, "The Board of Commissioners voted to move $29.5 million to a capital reserve fund earmarking $16 million for a Northwest Cabarrus Elementary School and $13.5 million toward the replacement of Mount Pleasant Middle School, and up to $2 million for engineering and design work for the Mount Pleasant Middle School." That that be corrected to read that $13.5 million toward the Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement and, I mean, excuse me, included up to $2 million for engineering and design. The $13.5 million was for the middle school replacement, and the $2 million, up to $2 million, made up the full $13.5 million. And I did converse with our chairman, and he agreed with that, and I think Dr. Shepherd agrees with me also. So that needs to be corrected, that it was toward the replacement of Mount Pleasant Middle School, included up to $2 million, including up to $2 million for engineering and design.
Okay. Board members, is everybody okay with that correction? That was my recollection as well when Lynn and I spoke, that the $13.5 had the $2 million in it, and that's what we're trying to reflect. Okay. Any other comments? There was a question about a comment that I made in the board retreat, and I'm fine with the way it's worded because the comment was about the ORED study, and my comment was that we were going to tell ORED where the elementary school boundary was going to be for them to then adjust our study. And there was, Robert had a question, and I'm okay with the way it's worded. There's quite a few pronouns in that sentence, so it is a little confusing, but I think we're fine. Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve the?
I have one.
Okay.
On page four of the January 30th meetings as well. In the paragraph, it's under Construction Standards and Design Guidelines, second paragraph, it said, "Board Chair Vice, Board Vice Chair Barry Schumaker advised that the energy savings in the CCS had reached almost $1 million per year," and I've asked to get a parenthetical on that to show us what the actual savings since our energy manager's been here, and she's done that. And then also, in that same sentence, it said, "Crediting energy-efficient new schools that have allowed our district to become energy-positive or net-zero." That's not accurate the way it is. I was actually referring to, "We would like to engage new energy-efficient schools to allow our district to become energy-positive or net-zero on our new schools." So it was a little bit changed around there.
Okay, so how do you want it to, how do you want, what correction would you like Ms. Monroe to make? I mean, just go ahead and words me.
Yeah, just take the crediting energy and just say, "Looking forward, we would like to build energy-efficient new schools that will allow our district to become energy-positive or net-zero."
Okay. Any comments, Board members? All right, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
I have a motion from David, Mr. Harrison.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and we have approved several sets of minutes. Thank you for those corrections, Board members, and we will move on to reports and item 7.1, Board Chairman Comments, and I do not have any comments tonight, so we will move on to 7.2 to Dr. Barry Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have several items I'd like to highlight this evening. First, I want to begin my comments by, with some great news about the excellent work of our teachers and our students. We're very proud of the student growth this year in our district. Our teacher effectiveness percentage is first in the Charlotte region, and we expect to be one of the top for the state once the data is released. We've also learned last month that Winkler Middle School is the number-one school in the state for last year for student growth of all schools. As we continue our budget process, I'd like to encourage our viewing audience to complete our budget survey. We need your input as we develop our recommendations for the 2014-2015 school-year budget. You can have access to the survey electronically from our district website at www.k12.nc.us, or you can obtain a paper copy from any of our schools. The survey will be open until 5:00 PM on March 17th. And I'd also like to remind you about our upcoming budget discussion sessions, which are all open to the public. Next March is National School Social Work Month. Please join me in celebrating the contributions of our school's social workers that they make each day in the lives of our students. Our social workers functions, they function as change agents and serve as a vital link between home, school, and community. We appreciate all that you do. March is also Youth Art Month. Each year during Youth Art Month, we showcase the talents of our student artists and turn our lobby in the Ed Center into an art gallery. To our viewing audience, please take some time this month to visit the Ed Center to check out this wonderful display. I want to congratulate the J.M. Robinson High School VEX Robotics Team for qualifying to compete in the World Championships. This is the second consecutive year that the Bulldog Robotics Team has earned a spot in the world competition. This year's competition will be held in Anaheim, California. Additionally, we have several elementary and middle school students who will be competing later this month in the state science fair. Our students competing attend Concord, Hickory Ridge, and J.M. Freese Middle Schools, as well as Coltrane Webb, Pitt School Road, Arbrown McAllister, and Wyancoff Elementary Schools. We wish all of these students the best of luck in their next level of competition. Congratulations also are in order for two schools that recently received grants. Winkler Middle School received a grant from Borough's Welcome Fund through its PRISM, meaning Promoting Innovation in Science and Mathematics Program, for $2,985. The school will use the grant to fund its seventh-grade science project. And Rocky River Elementary School is the recipient of a $4,000 grant from the NFL and National Dairy Council's Fuel Up to Play 60 Program. The school will work with the Southeast United Dairy Industry Association to develop programs that encourage fitness and nutrition. And finally, I want to remind parents and students that March 28th has been designated the makeup day for our Valentine's Snow Day. Students will be dismissed from school early on the 28th. Also important to note, now March 27th will be a full day of school. Complete information about the makeup day and the calendar changes is available on our district website and social media sites. Thank you, Mr. Sharon, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. There are a lot of good things going on in Cabarrus County schools, and I appreciate you bringing those to light. We will move on to section eight, our guest speaker section. Guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of the board's business meeting by calling the board clerk at 704-262-6238 by 12:00 noon on the Friday prior to the meeting. Individuals addressing the board may speak for three minutes, and persons representing a group may speak for five minutes. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in representing the board. And tonight, we do have as guest speaker, Mr. Nicholas Nostro, President of the Cabarrus Educators Association. And Nicholas, welcome, and you have five minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chaperson. Good evening, Mr. Keiger, Dr. Shepherd, Mr. Schumaker, Mr. Walter, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Schu, Mr. Harrison, and Dr. Phillips. I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you to Mrs. Kathy Auger and Dr. Shepherd for giving me an opportunity to be part of the 25% contract committee. I truly appreciate being part of the process, as it was difficult for everyone to make the work, to do the work, despite the negative impacts of the law. Now, I'm going to switch hats and speak as the local president of the Cabarrus Educators Association. When Dr. Van Hooklim and Ms. Natchris spoke and stood in front of the board last month to propose a resolution regarding the Read to Achieve initiative, I thought, what if the board would do the same for the 25% teacher contract? In my hand is a copy of a resolution that CEA and NCAE would like for the board to adopt tonight. While this resolution objects to the 25% contract law, it still allows the LEA to put forward their plan for compliance. Although we don't like this law that legislators are putting into our hands, we resolve and urge the General Assembly to appropriate the money to other usage. While Cabarrus County is ahead of the game in creating the contract survey, implementing the process, we really should stop and give serious consideration to the signing of this resolution instead. In fact, we, the Cabarrus Association of Educators, urge you to take a stand with us against any policy that pits educators against one another and works against our collaborative efforts to learn, grow, share, and reach every student. Consider these two scenarios. The first is, if every employee were to sign it, the cost would be about $180,000. Where's the funding going to be coming from? The state? Not as much as you think, because they don't have the funding for all 25% of the qualified employees statewide. Cabarrus County Schools? Do you think the county commissioners will fund if the legislators don't put enough money into the next budget? Where will we get the money to do this? We are already $350,000 short for the Read to Achieve program this year. The county does not have a lot of spare funding for education right now. In fact, the $180,000 would have benefited local programs and/or the positions more than an extra $36.85 a month for only 25% of employees. For me personally, this would pay for less than one week of gasoline a month. We know this money can be put to better use for students and for employees. The second scenario would be if all employers were to decline this offer, and the school board would stand with us by passing this resolution. The money goes back to the state anyway. However, this sends a clear message to legislators that we, as educators, will stand for public education at all costs. We will stand together for students and employees, showing that we will not be pitted against each other in a Hunger Games scenario, and we will not be bought to support bad policy, even if it might personally is right for students, employees, and public education. In conclusion, I would ask Cabarrus County Board of Educators and Dr. Shepherd to sign this resolution with me and to make a clear message to legislators that we respect all our educators, all our staff, and all of the children we work with to show and why Cabarrus County Schools is indeed leading the way in public education and being the clear choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Do you have a signed document?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to give it to Ms. Monroe, the board clerk?
I would, please.
Okay, great, fantastic. Okay, Board members, we're going to move on to item number nine, approval of the consent agenda. Last week, these were items we discussed, and we agreed to put them on the consent agenda. So without further ado, I've got a motion by Mr. Schu that we accept the consent agenda. I need a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and we have approved the consent agenda, and we will move on to item number 10, our action agenda, and we will ask Lynn Whitkey to come to the podium. And this is the request for approval of the consulting firm to conduct the facility assessment study. And Board members, I want to publicly thank Mr. Harrison. At our interview process last week, we had four firms, and I was not able to make that meeting. So on pretty short notice, Mr. Harrison was able to get there. I thought it was important that we have at least two board members there, and I was very appreciative and happy that you were able to make it. So thank you very much for that, and we will turn the presentation over to Mr. Whitkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Chairman Keiger mentioned, we, last week, Wednesday, we did interview four firms. As you recall, we had a submittal of 24 firms. We went through a process of reviewing all of those documents, narrowed it down to four firms, and they did appear before us last week. I think that the interesting thing was that they were all very well-prepared, but I think they were all very knowledgeable in their ability to do the work. I think some of the firms stood out a little bit ahead of others because of the nature of how they do their work. I would say that some have dramatically more experience, such as the firm we're talking about this evening, Fanning Howie. They also utilize, both Fanning Howie and another one of the firms utilizes, a computer-driven software program that records the data as they go. So it doesn't, it isn't a two-step process. It's literally done in the field at that point of their work. So there's a lot of time saved in that, and one of the big, big factors with Fanning Howie is their commitment to deliver the product in fairly close order. They're looking at a June delivery date for the draft. So that was certainly a So that was certainly appealing to everyone, and I think because of their experience, their knowledge, not only of the nationwide educational K-12 scene, but also very much their work in North Carolina, made them stand out in our minds. So our recommendation is to go with Fanning Howey and to allow us to negotiate. I believe the figure was $322,000 that was approved as the top end fee. We are working with them. I was going to ask Dave, did you have a response from them today, or?
We did.
Okay. Yeah, we just haven't had a chance to sit down and really negotiate a final cost with them, but it will obviously probably be at or below that number.
Great, thank you, Mr. Whitkey. Below would be preferable.
Yes, sir.
And with that, we will start with Mr. Harrison, since he did a stand-in on the committee. We will open with his comments as the recommendation to the Board of Fanning Howey to do our facility needs assessment.
Only to echo Mr. Whitkey's and Mr. Burnett's comment and their assessment, and I do believe it was a fair process. The same approach or the same questions were taken and applied to each of the four participants who made their presentations. It, I think the decision has been professionally vetted and is a very strong recommendation on the part of our staff here. So I would like to strongly suggest to the Board that we follow forward, go forward with that recommendation from staff.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Harrison, and we'll continue with Dr. Phillips. Do you have any comments?
Well, yes, I have a question for you, Lynn. You said that Fanning Howey is the most experienced of the firms. Can you give me some examples of facility assessments of this scope that they have done, and what school districts they did it for?
I don't have that information with me on hand. I'd be happy to provide it to you.
I did, I warned you beforehand, it was coming.
I'm sorry. We clearly, there's a large number of them on their resumes.
Mr. Whitkey, was that the firm that did Chicago City Schools?
Uh...
Or Wake County?
Wake County.
Wake County was one that they did. And it looks like to me Mr. Harrison and Mr. Shoemaker are diligently digging through their things. So I believe we'll have an answer here in just a minute.
Very good, sir.
We're looking for that. We'll just move on to Mr. Schu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Phillips took my question. Other than that, I'm good with your selection.
Yeah, they have a large, I mean, they've done very, very large programs as well as relatively small ones, so.
And Mr. Schu, there's another piece to this firm that's going to answer a question that you had previously when we discussed this, and I'm not going to let the cat out of the bag. We'll wait, and I'll see if somebody mentions it, but I've got that in mind just for you. So we'll move on and go out to Mr. Walter. Do you have any comments or questions?
Is this for the 22 schools, or we're trying to, are we doing the, providing the information for the remaining schools? Is that how that was?
We're working on that. That's part of our negotiations with them. Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, I don't have any comments over the choice, I mean.
Great, thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any comments?
All right, after this is done, are we going to be able to pick it up, or are we going to have to run back to these people every time and get them to update it?
There's the beauty of what's coming next. So go right ahead.
Yes. The software program that they have ties in directly to our SchoolDude system, so we will be able to move that information directly into our current, well, actually, it's going to be a new, a new add-on piece of software for SchoolDude that will provide us with the ability to update all that information. It's also tied to a nationally accepted cost data program, and the benefit there is that if you pick it up in two years and say, okay, what are the costs for these schools? That will automatically update itself through the software program that will be purchased.
But are, I mean, we've got to purchase something additional then on top of this?
We have to, we have to buy the, as I understood it, we have to buy the access to the Means, RS Means cost data connection, and we do have to buy, and it's called a module, for the SchoolDude, which we've been looking at. We've been looking at a number of facilities management programs, and SchoolDude is the one that we are leaning towards because we have a good investment in their general data that they, and software that they provide us with now. They have our work order system, they have our warehouse data for us. They do a number of things for us right now, so it's logical that if we can use their program and benefit from that, it will be helpful.
All right, when you take all these things, buying this, buying that, doing this, when you take all these things, and Lynn, I asked you this question, you know, that I mentioned to you about outsourcing, about the other things. You take all these things you're talking about, doing this cost, that cost, is it still cheaper for us to do this than to outsource it? And this is where I'm coming from. You know, I mentioned to you what I'd learned, the information I got from CPCC, what they did, where they outsourced it, because they got all this paid for. You know, they, when they outsourced it, and their company paid for this study with the outsourcing of it, and...
I'm not going to argue the idea. What I will say is that, having been on the consulting business side for a long time, I assure you that owners pay for it all. It's a question of when and how, but all owners pay for the services rendered. And it's done in a variety of ways, but it all costs money. Nobody's giving you anything. It is inherently built into the cost of their services. It could be done on an annual fee, it could be done in a number of ways, but it is something that you will pay for. You might not pay for that immediate study that's done, but you will pay for the services over the long haul. And that, I believe, is true of anyone who's bought these services in the past. The benefit here is that we control the information. We have the information that will be downloaded to our system. It'll be updatable, that's the right word, every year if we want to challenge the cost of things and find out what's been moving, if different costs have changed. We can do that simply by the use of the RS Means program. So it's available to us, and we have, you know, work order systems that'll be tied to it. We'll be able to know a lot more about the amount of time, the work hours that we're spending, the cost of materials that we're spending, and tie both the work order system and this program in together. So in the long run, I think it's going to be a benefit to us to do it this way. Thank you. But I would say, having been through that in a statewide system, I will say that we ended up paying, paying either on the front end or on the back end for the services that were theoretically free up front, and that's...
Well, I know you don't get anything for free. I understand. I'm not that naive, but you weigh one or the other. I mean, I understand that, but in looking at this, and one of my concerns is, I've been sitting on this board for eight years, and I'm seeing this hurried to get there now, and where my concern is, why are we hurrying to get here now when, I've been here for eight years and we haven't been hurrying to get there? And I'm real concerned about that, but...
I've been talking to people for three years since I've been in the position I'm currently in. It's a document that I've had at every one of my public works, wherever I was involved. It was available to me. I was amazed that we didn't have it. I was more amazed when I came to the job that I have and found how little information we really do have. And this is, in my opinion, the best way to jumpstart that information track, is to have a current database of information on all of our buildings. It'll be uniform throughout, it'll use the same costing materials throughout. Rather than having each architect do it for each project they're working on, it'll be uniform across all schools. So it's a great benefit going forward and planning for the future, and I think that's what the Board has talked about all along, is knowing, and so has the Commissioners Group, asking for planning for the next three, five, 10 years out. This document will help us greatly in achieving that goal.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Shoemaker.
Well, I got to participate in the facility needs assessment. What Carolyn is talking about, and what she's asked about, is there are some parts and pieces that will help us along. We currently use SchoolDude in our work, work orders and that, whatnot. However, the SchoolDude portion that we use does not include a planning and scheduling module, which is what Mr. Whitkey's group is now looking for. This, the results of this survey will then easily be ported into SchoolDude. It maps over to the fields in SchoolDude, and so that information will be now contained in the planning and scheduling module that they're looking to possibly purchase, which will help us have a more robust, computerized maintenance management system. Right now, we're kind of got a partial maintenance management system, but it doesn't allow us to really schedule work in it. So we, now we'll be using one system to not only perform work orders, but to actually schedule work as well into the future. That's not a part of what Fanning and Howey are providing us, that's just something we'll buy. The RS Means portion is a industry standard on costing. So what the Fanning model, what they are proposing to provide us is a facilities assessment in that there's costing portions to that assessment. RS Means is the industry standard, so we would just get a permission or get a license with RS Means to port that new information in, and they update their information every year. So then, Mr. Whitkey's group won't have to go and look up information, but they'll have the industry standard of information on roofing costs, on costs for a different type of piping and plumbing, for costs on electrical, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So you'll have all this detailed cost that will just fold in and then go straight into what's remaining in the scheduled maintenance that will be provided as a result of this assessment survey. As we looked at this, and I want the Board to feel comfortable, Fanning Howey has done a number of different school systems, but the four groups that we interviewed at the end were very capable. They had very strong teams, were capable of doing the same assessment as far as that was concerned. The difference was, how could we use the data? There was concern that, you know, we might get a book, and it'd be laborious, even, all of them could provide us an Excel spreadsheet, but then Excel spreadsheets are still hard to work with because it's out of your normal workflow. What we were hoping to get is something that would really work in our workflow, so that as our, you know, Stephon and Mr. Van Rieren and Mr. Whitkey's group do their work, it's in there with them, and they're doing it off of the computerized maintenance management system that they'll have, that they have right now. So this provided us the most adequate way of keeping up with the book and making it truly a living document, rather than just a Excel flat file. And it's one more, one more file that you have to manipulate, but it doesn't really integrate with your workflow. So we felt like, after talking with them, and then their capability, being able to be iteratively working with the process, with their product that they have, their software package, in the field, actually entering data and it getting updated almost immediately from the time that they enter it, would provide it a shorter window and then maybe some opportunities down the road. So some of the schools that they have done are Wake County Public School, Providence Rhode Island Public Schools, Southwest Dubois County in Indiana, their public schools. They did one in Little Rock, Arkansas, their public school system there. They did Cache County Public School Systems in Utah, and Lincoln Stockton Public Schools in Indiana. So they've done a fair number of assessment surveys across this country and have worked with the tool that they're going to provide and are very familiar with the outputs of it. So we felt very confident that they would be able to do the work that we need them to do.
They've done, I just noticed in their document, they've done 74 of these studies since 2008. So they, that is certainly one of their kind of meat and potato services.
Great, thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Schu, the piece that I was referring to was the SchoolDude piece. You had mentioned previously that your fear was that this document would be put on a shelf, and we just wouldn't be able to use it. And what would we do with the information once we had it? Well, that tie-in that Mr. Shoemaker's talking about, that's the key for Lynn and his group to be able to take it and use it to our benefit. So that's what I was getting at, because that was a concern that you had had previously, which was a legitimate concern, and I think with the, with the firm and the software that they've got, that question's been answered. So, Ms. Carolyn, did you, did you want to make another comment? You don't look like you're on board.
I'm not, no, no, not really. I like to see a figure, and you don't have me a figure yet. And I don't like doing, I don't like seeing something and saying, yeah, go ahead. I don't like it with the man. I mean, not, I don't have a man, a man.
Well, it...
I'm not real crazy about, say, yeah, I'm just giving you a free rein here. I don't like that.
Well, we don't have free rein. The Board has put a cap on it, and we're required by law to go negotiate a fee. That's the only way we can do it.
You haven't brought me a fee back yet. You haven't gave me a fee yet.
Well, we're going to pick the firm and authorize him to go negotiate. If we don't like the fee, we go down to the second group that's on the list.
But you haven't given me a fee yet.
Well, I don't have one to give you. So we will move on, and Board members, the recommendation has been made. Mr. Schu, do you have a comment?
I do, as we've listened. Mr. Walter, you hadn't spoken yet, have you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get Mr. Walter out of the way, and then we'll...
Yeah, I had. There was really nothing I could add to that. I like the piece that Barry was talking about. I think that's very beneficial to our staff and makes it more worthwhile than a piece of a document, this is a show.
Yep, thank you, Rob. Did you have a comment, Mr. Schu?
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we listen to everybody, Mr. Whitkey, I just wanted to ask, in the due diligence process, did anyone, I'm assuming, and I want to assume, that somebody, either on the committee or you yourself, talked with somebody at Wake County Schools to find out their level of satisfaction with the study and the usability of it? I wanted to ask you about that. And then I also, I couldn't help but notice, since I wasn't part of the committee, I guess I, it's no big deal, you know, I wasn't a part of it. I got total confidence in my fellow board members that they did their due diligence. But I couldn't help but notice, but there wasn't but just that one district in North Carolina, there was one other facility that they did a study on, and 99% of all of the work that they've done has been out of state. So that sort of concerns me a little bit. You know, they've been in business since 2008. That does concern me, not that they're not capable of doing it, as the chairman had mentioned, you know, they're all capable of doing what we're asking and delivering and all, but that part did concern me. And there was one more thing. I'll take a break on that while you can talk about those two things there.
Thank you, Mr. Schu.
Dave, do you want to, I know Dave was trying to get some folks on the phone last week, and so I don't know if you were successful or not.
As far as how long the company's been in business, they've been in business longer than 2008. I think probably the reference there is trying to get applicable and relevant information. The ones that they chose most likely are the districts that are the same size, similar size, so that we would feel more comfortable about their scope and their ability to handle our size, our needs. As far as North Carolina work, we would have to specifically go back and out of that 74, or go back even further, try to find if there are more North Carolina examples.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. And one of the main reasons that I asked that question is simply because we don't always do things in North Carolina, particularly Cabarrus County, as other states and counties do. And what type of diligence, due diligence, does this company, Fanning Howey, what type of preliminary work do they do about North Carolina, and in particular Cabarrus County, to be prepared for code violations, code bringing things up to code? Our building standards and our own construction standards for Cabarrus County, how do they know what we do here?
Okay.
Since they haven't been doing them in North Carolina?
That's a great question, and the team, certainly we see Fanning Howey, but that is, it's really a group of consultants. The consultants are North Carolina consultants. There are many in this area, Charlotte area consultants, and they're architects, they're engineers, they're folks that do K-12 projects. If I remember correctly, Fanning Howey is strictly K-12. I don't think that they do prisons, I don't think they do churches, they don't do, you know, that other type of work. I think they're strictly K-12. And again, the consultant team is a North Carolina team.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I think one option the Board would have to address Mr. Schu's point would be to make a selection contingent on getting a positive reference from Wake County Schools, for example. So if they haven't had a chance to do that, and you want to act, so you're not waiting a month, you could say, you know, you could direct staff to get a reference from Wake, and assuming it's, you know, a positive reference, proceed, but if there are concerns raised, then they could bring it back to the Board.
Okay, great, thank you, Mark. Dr. Phillips, did you have a comment?
I did, but Dave pretty much addressed it. I was just going to point out that several of these consultants... of these consultants, as I was, that are teamed with, what's the name of the company?
Fanning.
Fanning Howie, are consultants that have, that we have engaged with on projects in our district. This food design has been apparently the designer of all of our school cafeterias for every school that we've built since 1997, so they're going to be very familiar with that. The architecture firm most recently was involved in designing the, the new Northwest High School gym, Northwest Cabarrus High School gym. So, it, it looks like they are partnering with local firms that are, that are familiar with us, because I, I shared your same concern when I started looking through their experience list that were alive, Ohio, Illinois, Indiana, right? So, it sounds like they're, they're augmenting that knowledge with, with a lot of local knowledge by, by partnering with the other firms. So, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that, and I also like our attorney's recommendation.
Fantastic. Board members, if we, is everybody comfortable if, well, I'm going to ask for a motion, and if you would like to include a contingency on speaking specifically to Wake County, then that would be, that would be agreeable to me. So-
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the, the Fanning Howie firm for this facility assessment study contingent upon a very favorable report from the Wake County School District.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Schu. Do I have a second to that motion?
Can I amend that, or do we have to have a second first and then?
Do we have to have a second to have discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, I have a motion and a second. So, now, if you'd like to discuss it or amend it, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to have, I'd like to amend it. Because the SchoolDude portion is a really important piece, I would like to make sure that our contract states that we will get a clean import into our SchoolDude at the end, and that, that it will be provable and, you know, verifiable, or whatever the proper language is, but that, that we will, we will know that we have this electronically in our CMMS system.
The terminology may be something like compatibility between the export from the Fanning Howie software imported into SchoolDude would have to be compatible, something to that effect.
Okay, board members, we have a motion, an amended motion, that we select Fanning Howie to do the facility, that we, we direct Mr. Whitkey to negotiate a fee with Fanning Howie to provide a facility needs assessment, provided they can give us a clean segue to the information that we're looking for from RS Means and-
SchoolDude.
And SchoolDude, and also provided that we get a favorable recommendation from Wake County.
I appreciate it, Mr. Schu.
I need a second to that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Harrison. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
And I can, and let me state, wow, as I, as I told you before, you, you said you're negotiating, you have not bought me that amount here, to me right now. So, I do not have an amount in front of me at this point, and this is my reasoning for that. I do, do not like approving something that has not gave me a dollar amount. And I know you're saying you're negotiating, but I do not have that amount in front of me. And I do not like saying, okay, I'm approving it, even though I know there's the, the cap on it. But that is my main reason behind it.
Well, Ms. Carpenter, how would you like us to proceed? We have to pick a consultant, and then we have to negotiate a fee. So, if we all said what you're saying, how are we going to proceed? We couldn't.
You, no, you could, you could go ahead and do that with the, well-
Actually, because, because of their, this, we're selecting an architect that's governed by policy 9110, and that says you have to first select the architect based on qualifications, and then after you make that selection, you negotiate. It does have a provision that says if a fair and reasonable fee cannot be agreed upon, the board will select the next best qualified architect and/or engineer and negotiate. But it is a two-step process, unlike a, a lot of our contracts where you come and you get a contract, and they say, okay, here's a contract for construction of the building, and you know the amount at the time of award. For selection of architects, and there's a state statute that requires it this way, you can't use price as a factor. You can't say, I'll pick the best architect that'll do it for 250. You have to select on quality first, and that's the stage that I think you're being asked to vote on tonight. Then you negotiate a fee. Now, if they're unreasonable and say, well, it's going to be a million dollars, we would reject that and go to whoever the number two choice is to decide what a reasonable fee is, and that is up to the board. And once it's negotiated, that, I expect the board will then approve the final contract and the amount. But you do have to make the selection so we can enter into that negotiation. So, it is a, the, the policy requires a two-step process where you make a selection before you have a definite fee amount.
Thank you, Mark. And that's what we're doing. We're, we're picking them based on their qualifications. So, there's two things at play here. If Mr. Whitkey's happy with the fee he negotiates, that doesn't necessarily mean we're happy with the fee he negotiates. And the committee's direction was have a clear-cut number two, so that we know who the firm's going to be. If we can't negotiate a fee that's acceptable to this board, we know who the next firm in line is to then, to then again go talk to. So, all we're doing here, Carolyn, is, is picking them based on their qualifications. So, that, that's what we did. You, you've already voted no, so the, the minutes are going to reflect that that was six to one.
Okay, that's fine, but I, I'm just stating, that's why I'm-
Okay, that's fine. Dr. Phillips, do you have a comment?
Point of information. So, when, if, if Lynn does negotiate a, a fee that he feels reasonable, does that then come back to the board for final approval as of a contract?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll have another chance.
I have another chance, and if I feel comfortable with, I may, I, I-
If we come back next time without a number, then we, you can send us all home.
All right, and I will.
Okay.
That is, the, the policy says that you negotiate a fee, and then the contract is approved, reviewed by the board attorney, approved by the board pursuant to the statute. So, those, that's the next step, is you negotiate the fee, then you have a contract. We, we review it as your attorney's, and then the board would adopt it. So, it is that, that it will come back for both.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, did we not, earlier tonight, approve minutes of previous meetings where we had discussions about this process? And it seems in the last few weeks, or in the last month or so, we've approved the cap on the fee as well as the process. And we've just now approved those minutes as they occurred from previous board meetings, and those stand now per that approval. I think we're, I think we're being consistent for the most part with those prior minutes, and with those prior votes that this entire board took at that time.
That's correct. And not only we're being consistent, we are following within the boundaries of the statute that we are supposed to operate under, and that's the most important piece. So, with that, board members, we are going to, I need a motion and a second.
Make one comment. It's not on this. This is something else. May I make one comment? On a letter I received.
Sure.
Um, yes, I, I know many of you may know that back in October, I took a trip to China, and I will be giving a report to our board. But during that trip, I did take a letter to a lot of the business individuals I met with, talking about our biotech university we're going to be having over at Northwest. And the letter was signed by Mike Jolly, talking about our college we're going to be setting up in this coming year over there. And in the letter, we were trying to get mentors from some of the business individuals over in China to be mentors to our students, possibly. And so, I'm, when meeting with a lot of the business individuals and a lot of the companies over in China, we had letters that we gave to them that were translated in China. Well, on February the 25th, Mike Jolly received a letter back from one of those companies, and this letter was from the Shanghai Pharmaceutical School. And it says, "Our school is a secondary vocational school which is located in Pudong New, New District in Shanghai. Our school trained students whose future working arena is pharmaceutical industry. Now, we are planning a two-week overseas, overseas study tour. Our school has the obvious strengths in biotechnology, which is close to our major. So, we are seeking the possibility of visiting your school in the coming June or July. This study tour will contain roughly 15 students whose ages are, are, is from 16 to 18." Now, this is the way the letter, so I'm just stating, you'll notice that their language is a little different than ours. "There will be two accompanying, accompanying teachers," so there'll be two teachers in this group. Moreover, we hope this study tour can help us to know more about each other so that we can further cooperate like establishing the sister schools, and so on. So, hopefully, it says, "If you're interested in this program, please contact me, and we can discuss on detail." So, I'm hoping when they come, they can tour Northwest plus the research parks. So, I was really excited about getting this letter, and this is one of our first contacts. So, hopefully, we're going to have some students visiting Northwest in our biotech, but I just wanted to make the board aware of this.
Fantastic. Thank you for sharing. I, I hope they come in June and not July. If they come in July, it's going to be a bunch of sweaty guys running laps on the football field, but.
But I wanted to make the board aware of this. Real excited about it.
Yes. Thank, thank you very much for sharing with that. That, that's fantastic, and we look forward to sometime here in the not-too-distant future of hearing about your trip. So, with that, I need a motion and a second that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with our attorney.
So moved.
I have a motion from Barry Schumaker, and a second from Mr. Schu. All those in favor-
Actually, I think you should, I think there's some other sections to reference.
Okay.
I think we're consulting with attorney.
I used to read the whole thing, and y'all said, ah, I don't do that anymore.
I think we may be doing personnel, well, I think we've got some personnel items as well.
Okay, well, we'll read the whole thing.
So, I, I think if you want to just say pursuant to A3, A5, and A6, that, I think, satisfies the statute as reflected in the minutes. Am I, unless I'm reading that wrong, I think that's what you've got on your-
Okay.
On the proposed motion. But I, but I do want to make sure it's not just the attorney, because I think we're going to be addressing some personnel stuff.
Okay.
No.
Can I revise my motion, sir?
We, we, we have not, yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to revise my- I'd like to revise my motion that we would go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318.11A3, 5, and 6.
I have a motion from Mr. Schumaker.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We, this board is now in closed session.